How you doing? I'm still here.
I don't know, Lexi's not here.
Nikki, you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call and order the Buckingham County Planning Commission work session for April 19th. Please stand as Commissioner Goodenham will lead us in our implication and Commissioner Cruz will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this awesome day. Thank you for the people who have assembled here. Guide us, guide our leadership, guide the planning commission, and bless the homes of those who have come to do the work of Buckingham County.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us to establish a quorum. We have a quorum as we have seven of eight. Nikki, any adjustments to adoption of the agenda?
Remain the same. I don't have anything.
Okay. I do understand Mr. Wright had commented to the side that he has not gotten all of his legal opinions in yet. So he would prefer rather than going and giving part of them, that he wait till he get them all in. So he will not be giving his presentation tonight. So that will be off the agenda. So with that change, do I have a motion to approve with the change?
I move.
All right. Second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes. That brings us to our first and only present presentation. I'll let you... Oh, I'm sorry, you're right there. Flow is yours.
Testing. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Good evening. My name is Heidi Divia-Bertou and I reside in District 5. I am on the Buckingham County Committee tasked to review the state study on the potential impacts of gold mining on Virginia and have been asked by Chair Bickford to give you an overview of this study. Speaking on behalf of the Friends of Buckingham and the Virginia Community Rights Network, I want to acknowledge how responsive the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors have been to resident concerns about the potential impacts in Buckingham County. We understand that you want to take action to protect the county and you want to be on sound legal footing. Thank you. We deeply appreciate your work. Our supervisors waited for the state final report before making their unanimous decision on February 13th, and I quote, "Carry the recommendation of the Gold Mine Review Committee to the Planning Commission to start the process to amend the zoning ordinance to ban metallic mining in any zoning district in Buckingham County and to come up with definitions for the ordinance for metals," end quote. We are not entirely clear about the Planning Commission's role in relation to the supervisors. We respect that you need to work within your authority. We ask that you consider the county's options and advise the supervisors how you can best work with them to prevent harmful impacts from mining and processing. Slide two, please. Thank you. We have noted five options that have come up in the county and been considered to varying degrees. They are simply stated here. Rely on a special use permit. Require industry to first show proof of a mine of similar scope that has caused no harm. Prohibit gold mining. Prohibit all metallic mining. And prohibit the use of cyanide in mineral processing. I will come back to these options later. Slide three, please. The 294-page state study report was published December 1st of last year. The state report is a combined report. It includes a state section with more than 160 written public comments and the 228-page report of the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine. The National Academies also published a clear and concise four-page summary, which we previously sent to you by email. Slide four, please. The study identifies potential impacts of gold mining in Virginia that should concern us. These include: Surface water and groundwater contamination such as acid rock drainage, also known as ARD, and sulfide-bearing rock disturbed during mining and/or toxic metal discharge; remobilization of legacy mercury from past uses; rare but catastrophic events such as dam failures and spills, which are increasingly... which are an increasing risk because of the frequency and severity of high precipitation and flooding events due to climate change; cumulative health effects due to interacting chemical and non-chemical stressors; and groundwater table drawdown for miles around is a major local concern. Slide five, please. The study also tells us clearly that our state regulatory framework won't protect us. Overall, the committee found that the regulatory framework of Virginia appears to have been designed for operations like crushed stone quarrying and sand and gravel operations, not gold mining. Virginia's current regulatory framework is not adequate to address the potential environmental degradation that could accompany commercial gold mining. Slide six, please. The report continues. Virginia's regulatory framework lacks an adequate financial assurance system, which poses a fiscal and environmental risk to the Commonwealth. In addition, Virginia lacks opportunities for a diverse public to be engaged in permitting processes. Virginia also lacks a modern system for review of environmental impacts. These and other portions of Virginia's regulatory framework fell short in comparison to other states, the federal government, and modern best practices. Slide seven, please. Slide seven lists the following inadequacies in Virginia's regulations identified in the report. There's a need for regulation of exploratory drilling, a need for public notification, information, and participation, a need for site-specific analysis of environmental and health impacts, a need for accurate assessment of potential long-term costs. There's a need for regulation of off-site processing. There are no regulations. Need for enforcement capacity. Fines are not issued for non-compliance. There is a lot lacking, wouldn't you say? I do not have time in a 20-minute presentation to address these inadequacies in detail, but I can say more about them in the Q and A if you like. Slide eight, please. To minimize... Sorry. The National Academies report makes two recommendations to the General Assembly and state agencies. First, to minimize impacts to human health and the environment. The GA and state agencies should ensure that robust site and project-specific analyses of the impacts are completed prior to the permitting of a gold mining project. Second, the GA and agencies should update Virginia's laws and its regulatory framework. These findings and recommendations help us understand why the supervisors decided to ask you to amend the zoning ordinance. The Virginia General Assembly and state agencies have not acted on the study recommendations. Our supervisors want to act to protect us. Slide nine, please. Looking at Virginia code, Virginia law gives localities the power to decide whether and where to allow, restrict, or prohibit any type of mining. Virginia law governing mineral mining activities also allows localities to establish standards and adopt regulations about mineral mining activities as long as they are not less stringent than those adopted by the Director of Virginia Energy. Buckingham County officials are empowered, as shown on this slide. Slide 10, please. The state study group and the National Academies were tasked with determining the potential impacts of gold mining and evaluating Virginia's existing regulatory regime. They found the potential impacts significant and the current regulations insufficient. Their report included two recommendations we saw earlier. Update Virginia's laws and regulatory framework and require robust site and project-specific analyses. The report for the state could not include specific recommendations about how local governments regulate mining. Additional resources to help you make informed decisions are available to you, including people. A staff representative and a committee member from the National Academy's gold mining study are available to talk with you. Other scientists who have had success improving mining practices around the world are willing to talk with you about what other communities have done and how they have fared. Dr. Steve Emmerman, a biophysicist specializing in groundwater and mining, and Jan Marle of Earthworks, who helped El Salvador adopt and maintain a metallic mining ban, have provided written highlights of their work and are willing to present to you. Please let us know the best way for you to receive this information. Slide 11, please. Another resource recently available for you is a 10-page toolkit from the Southern Environmental Law Center. SELC developed this paper to help Virginia communities understand the land-use tools available at the local level to regulate, restrict, or prohibit gold mining activities. This guide says that although this tool focuses on gold mining, these land-use tools also apply to other extractive activities, including the use of cyanide to extract gold or silver. SELC has supported other communities who have asked for their assistance in regulating extractive industries. We understand that Katie Whitehead, a Pennsylvania resident concerned about Aston Bay exploration for metals in her area, sent you a link to the toolkit. We can also provide it to you. Slide 12, please. Yet another resource is Pembroke, Maine, a small community that adopted a metallic mining ordinance last year in May. The people of Pembroke did not want to take the chance that a silver mining company would be able to get around Maine's strict new state laws, as they saw happening in other communities. So they banned industrial metallic mining. Slide 13, please. You're on it. Like Buckingham, Pembroke already had several mining operations active in the town. They simply exempted these industries from this law. Their new regulations do not affect the excavation of sand, gravel, fill, clay, or any other non-metallic minerals. Note the definition of a metallic mineral, which may be useful to you. Any ore or material to be excavated from the natural deposits on or in the earth for its metallic mineral content to be used for commercial or industrial purposes. Metallic mineral does not include ores of thorium or uranium. Slide 14, please. Now I want to return to the five options available to you. To remind us, here they are in brief. Rely on a special use permit. Require industry to prove it safe first. Prohibit gold mining. Prohibit all metallic mining. Prohibit the use of cyanide in mineral processing. Slide 15, please. One option is to rely on a special use permit. Buckingham County Special Use Permit Buckingham County's special use permit application does not address the concerns and state regulatory inadequacies that we have just summarized for you. And this is an understatement. Because the state is not prepared to regulate large-scale metallic mining operations, neither is Buckingham. Slide 16, please. A second local option for Buckingham is to require industry to prove it first. Prove it first requires a metallic mining company before permitting to first show proof of a mine of similar scope that has caused no harm to human health or the economy. This ordinance could be compatible with a land-use ordinance ban on the use of cyanide in processing. Or this ordinance could be written to take effect if a ban on metallic mining or cyanide processing is challenged. Virginia law grants Buckingham the authority to adopt prove-it-first. Virginia Code 15.2-1200 says localities may secure the general welfare and prevent pollution of water. 1102 says localities may secure the general welfare. 2280 says localities may restrict mining. Prove-it-first law has a 20-year success record in Wisconsin. From 1997 to 2017, no permits were granted. It looks really good for Minnesota to pass a prove-it-first law this year. This could be a viable option for Buckingham that you could recommend to the supervisors. Respectfully, as far as we know, Mr. Wright has not publicly considered these options in light of these particular Virginia codes. Slide 17, please. A third option is to prohibit gold mining. It's reasonable to consider banning gold mining, given the study's findings. The first bullet is a definition of gold mining you might find informative. Gold is not on the current list of critical minerals needed for clean energy and national security. And slide 18, please. A fourth option is to prohibit all metallic mining. Virginia's inadequate regulatory framework not only governs gold, but also other metallic mining and processing. The EPA considers metallic mining the most toxic of all industries, thus our interest and the supervisor's interest in prohibiting all metallic mining, not just gold. Mr. Wright has accepted the state study report conclusion that localities are authorized by Virginia code to control mining, and he advised the supervisors that they can use the zoning ordinance to effectively control mining in the county. This is from the February 13 supervisor minutes. Mining industry representatives have recently argued that banning metallic mining could prevent the mining of metals on the critical mineral list. This can be easily resolved by excluding any minerals on the USGS critical mineral Slide 19, please. A fifth option is to ban the use of cyanide in mineral processing. Virginia law gives localities the authority to restrict how extraction activities, including processing, are done. Whether a company uses cyanide to extract gold and silver depends on many factors. The study report repeatedly stated that site and project-specific analysis would be needed in order to characterize a particular operation and predict its impacts and feasibility. We know that cyanide poses significant risks. We also know cyanide was used in Virginia gold mining. A bill to ban cyanide use in mining and processing in Virginia had broad bipartisan support in the 2023 General Assembly. The cyanide bill, as it was called, was defeated at the last minute when many legislators were misled by the erroneous assertion that the bill would affect mining of critical minerals. The only references we have seen to cyanide in mining is in processing silver and gold. Gold and silver are not critical minerals. We support banning the use of cyanide in mining and processing, and we see this as a stopgap measure. It would protect us from gold and silver mining, but not all metallic mining. And slide 20, please. It's natural to protect what we love. In closing, I want to acknowledge that you have a complex problem before you. The state study makes it clear that Virginia needs regulatory changes and enforcement capacity to keep the environment and Virginians safe from potential negative impacts of industrial gold mining. Without adequate state regulations, we need local regulations now. We hope our suggestions are useful to you in finding the answers. You need to respond to the supervisors and draft language to protect us from metallic mining and processing. Thank you again for your work, and I know this was a lot, and there are more details I could go into, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you for listening. I know that was a lot.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the commission here. Anyone have questions?
Chairman?
Yes.
My first question would be to, regarding to your slide number four, you're talking about a number of these things, including the remobilization of legacy mercury. Would you explain to me where exactly these particular problems came from? Were they the result of the study that you and the group got together and did?
All in here. This is the printed copy of the National Academies', Sciences, Engineering, Medicine: The Potential Impacts of Gold Mining in Virginia.
That was the result of the study that you and Jordan and everybody else were on, right?
Yes, it was, well, that was, so that was a combination of three state agencies, and they hired the NAS, as they're referred to, the National Academies of Sciences, to do the more impartial study. So it was, it was, they were known as the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy at first, and also DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, and Department of Health. The three of them came together to do this study.
One other question on slide six. Would you kindly explain the adequate financial assurance that you, or maybe the Academy, came together and decided would be required?
Okay, you know, I'm going to pull on the, in the back here, they have conclusions and recommendations which go into it in summary, but in, at length, more than what I've given you. So, so the financial assurance. Virginia's bonding, I can read you a little bit, if you'd like. Okay. Virginia's bonding rates are based solely on disturbed acreage. This type of bond calculation often leads to under-collection of bonds for gold mining and processing operations because it focuses only on aspects of land reclamation and does not account for additional costs like post-closure water management.
What you're arguing here is it does not, it does not regard or address the consequential situation, given the fact that there was mining in that area?
Right.
So the sciences are saying that the bonds either should be greater or the state should require larger bonding?
Yes, I believe so. Now, I want to, I want to give a little disclaimer here. I did not do this study. I'm here to report as best as I can, so I mean, like, I can read to you, and I've only underlined a few things. I don't know that I can go right to answering some of your questions, but hey, if you got somebody from the, from the National Academies to come, they'd probably have your answers for you right there. So I will try and answer them as best as I can. Well, let's see. There was Stephanie, who was one of the...
Stephanie Johnson.
Johnson, yeah.
She sent me an email after Ms. Whitehead had sent the general...
Right.
And I tried to catch her. This afternoon, I got in time, and I did not. I left her a message at both places to explain to her that we may call on her to sort of follow up and reinforce some questions here, if the commission chooses to.
Right.
But anyway, I did not hear back from her before time of the meeting.
Great, thank you, thank you. Yeah, she, Katie had reached out to the chair, Chair Hopkins, to see if he could come, but apparently he's very, just over the top. So, but there are certainly a number of other people in that, there's a long list of experts that were on that study that they can call upon to come in and present. And I must say that each one specialized in different areas, so, but I think they know this business and they can answer your questions. Yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Yes.
On slide two, where you have the five, five local options to restrict or prevent mining activities that came about as a result of the study, are these the only options that came up, or these are just five chosen?
Well, these are the ones that have been talked about in public here, and, and all of these could be done in a variety of ways.
So how many other options did they offer? I'm just asking, they, we have five listed here, so were there other options besides these five?
Well, what I, what I would say is, like, for example, to prohibit all metallic mining, there's a lot of different ways you can do that, and that's what we're encouraging you to do, is to call in people who've worked with other communities, because how you write it is, is variable. And, you know, Southern Environmental Law Center has a toolkit, and they gave examples, you know, in brief, of what other communities in Virginia have done to regulate extraction activities. So, I mean, it's my humble opinion that, you know, Mr. Wright, this is a specialty, and I would suggest you get all the help you can get.
Okay.
Because people are willing.
So someone, so all this information was gleaned, and then you came down to the five options?
I just...
They didn't list those five options in the study?
In the study, no, no.
Okay, so, looking at all of the information that was available to you, then these are the options that...
That we've been, we've been talking about with the supervisors. I believe I said on one of the slides that the state study could not advise, they were not tasked to advise local communities in how to regulate mining. They were tasked to look at what the state is doing, not at what localities are doing. So it's up to us now, because the state's not acting.
Okay, and what I'm trying to find out is, who is the "we" that came up with these options?
Those five, that would be us.
Us who?
Friends of Buckingham and Virginia Community Rights Network.
Okay.
We led the, whatever, the organization, the community organization.
All right, I'm just looking for the source document, so these five came from...
I see, I see your, I see how you could confuse that, yes, that did not come from the study. We took the opportunity to extrapolate from what the study has shown us to what our options are now.
Right, because the first slide shows the study, the picture of the study, and then it next is a summary. So it looks as if that summary came from the study.
Okay, thank you for the feedback.
And that's to clarify who the "we" is that did this.
Yes, very good.
I'd like to jump to slide 15, and you said that Buckingham County's special use permit application does not address the concern. Is something, again, that your study came up with, or is this something the Friends of Buckingham came up with? And if so, can you explain a little more clearly why you think a special use permit would not work?
Well, I think it says it fairly simply there, that the special use permit does not address all of the concerns that are before us with, at the, at the state level. Maybe I can refer to Pembroke and how they enacted a ban on metallic mining, and that is a stronger measure than using a special use permit. But they took that because they did not trust that even their strict, which we don't have strict state laws, that even with their strict state laws, they were afraid that the silver mine would get around those laws. So they, they were laying hurdles in, you know, roadblocks as best they could. And so, you know, with a special use permit, that's like the minimal protection, you know, it doesn't say anything about how you would regulate it if you allowed, if you allowed a special use permit. I mean, you'd have to all become mining experts if you were to allow it, or, you know, just trust in God that things would go right.
Chairman, this is, number one, I don't, see, I'm not as convinced as the center that a special use permit wouldn't help us, all right? But I don't know, and I think this is something from, hey, the attorneys take up with us, because I know we can lay conditions using a special use permit, whereas if we try to do things in zoning to be restrictive, I know that, I'm curious to find out, actually, what would be more significantly challenged. I think that's a legal question. I think that's something we have to wait for EM or somebody to come and talk to us about. I'm not as convinced as you are that an SUP wouldn't help us. Because from my viewpoint, I don't know how much of a restriction we can place on mining before we tip over the, before we step over the line where, in fact, we become legally challenged. That's the concern I have, and I guess we can't answer that question until we have a lawyer here.
Right. Well, the, I will tell you what a little bit of conversation I've had with Mr. Wright. The special use permit is valid because it's, well, twofold. It's the established framework that you work under. It's a legal framework, it's established, it's been used and accepted. So you have that framework that would be less likely to cause exposure for the county. Second thing is, because it's established framework and accepted for all these years by the state and other states, it's less likely to be altered by political changes in the state agencies.
See, that's what I understood, too, that, and so I'm not as uncomfortable with an SUP approach. I would be, probably in regard to what you're saying, I, I would be somewhat skeptical unless there was some convincing evidence otherwise that, that the policing of that particular situation by the county would ensure that those conditions would be followed. But again, that, that would hold true if we changed the zone, too. I mean, if...
Correct.
So policing is always an issue, I think you brought that up. But I'm not as convinced as you are that these SUPs wouldn't be effective. I think an SUP is a perfectly acceptable approach if we can get it worded correctly, although I don't know that that's the only approach.
So, could I ask you a question? So you would use the, your approach would be to use the SUP to stop it or to allow it? Because if you allow it, and then if you pass the SUP, then you know you don't have state regulations adequate or enforcement adequate to allow it?
What I would presume, and I'm not a lawyer, and I would ask the lawyers this, is if we did an SUP and then we put conditions on it so long as the state did not disallow those conditions, it would be therefore an allowance for us to police. That's what I'm thinking, but I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know if that's the case. Do you understand, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. The special use permit process allows each application to stand on its own merit, and also allows this body, as well as the board of supervisors, to put conditions on to accomplish what you're trying to do with that application, whether you approve it or disapprove it. So, again, it is the accepted... Uh, so, again, it, it is the accepted framework it's been in. I'm not saying that these others, uh, possibly do have merit and maybe can be brought into the special use permit and modified to fit in to make it even stronger SUP. Uh, again, that's a question that, uh, Mr. Wright is trying to gather information for, for us to let us know, so. But just remember that that's the framework that is accepted and been used, and we would be operating within that with the special use permit. And I would assume that we have, uh, which Heidi brought up, you know, we have some leeway to, uh, extrapolate or, or maybe extend out some of the conditions that would limit even more.
I would, I would presume that, but again, I don't, I don't know-
Yes, right.
I don't know where we step over the line.
Anyway, um, I, it, it, and-
I have another question.
Yes, please.
I'm going back to slide two, and I'm looking at the recommendations. And so how would these recommendations affect all the other mining operations that are already in Buckingham? How would these recommendations affect them?
Uh, right, um, well, I think that's more of a question for, uh-
That's a legal question also.
Yeah, that's a legal question, and we would love to be part of that discussion.
I would, Joyce, I would assume that any industry would be grandfathered in that's already existing. I don't think you could go back to an established mining operation in the county and require them to prove it first, say, you know, if, if that was the direction we went. I think you'd have to grandfather in the ones that are already established. It would be just new applications that would be coming in front of the county.
Yeah, I, I suppose if you, if you put "new" before all of these, 'cause we kind of, we, we used to, prohibit new gold mining, prohibit all metallic mining. Um, the require industry to prove it safe first, you wouldn't do that for existing industry. It would be for only new industry. Prohibit the use of cyanide in mineral processing for a new industry.
I would like to speak to number five, the prohibit the use of cyanide. That's certainly an option to go, even with the special use permit, you can make that a condition. But I'm wondering if that would be the smart route to take. Rather than being specific, you could be more general and just say chemicals. Uh, with the, uh, improvement in technology all the time, another chemical may come available that they can use that still may have detrimental causes, but it's not cyanide. And they've switched over to that, so if you, if you specify one chemical, it may be a way to get around it. Whereas if you'd use a more general concept and just say chemicals, harmful chemicals.
Well, I, I'm gonna do something a little outrageous and, and say that I, I think there's some people here that wouldn't be very happy about that. Um, when, when we worked on, um, the, the, uh, the bill, the, the cyanide bill, um, it, it first said, um, to eliminate cyanide and also sulfuric acid. And sulfuric acid was actually deleted from the bill to accommodate the concerns of, of cyanide. So, um, uh, that's the tricky thing, and that's why we said that, um, that cyanide is pretty much mostly used for gold. Talking about metallic mining, um, is mostly used for gold and silver and not for the others. And so that's why we also said it's, it's like a stopgap measure, 'cause it doesn't really take care of all those other issues. But, I mean, there's, what, like, eight thousand chemicals out there? And very few of them ever, have ever been called back, and we're paying for that right now. Yeah, so where, where do you start and where do you stop?
Yes, good.
A concern I have, and I don't know, and I guess maybe this draws me back to an SUP, uh, because we can do case by case with an SUP. It turns me that if we were to ban chemicals, as an example, I don't have any problem with banning a cyanide in a, in a mining operation. I just wonder whether or not that would bleed over into insecticides and things like that that farmers use that are necessary for their cattle and their crops. I, I don't, I, I, and again, this may be a legal question, but-
Yeah.
But it seems to me that, again, if we, if we tip this cabinet over, uh, I mean, how, how many other businesses are gonna be affected if we don't word this thing extremely carefully, uh, especially as it relates to chemicals?
Right, and that's, that's why I'll say, I don't think you wanna be specific. You just say chemicals, and not banning, it's just-
But I mean, do we have to say chemicals in a specific process or for a specific-
That would probably be a legal question that we'd have to look at.
It concerns me, I'm sorry, it concerns me that, uh, that we might end up bleeding into farming or-
Right, and you don't wanna do that, and that, and that's, you know, if we have to be specific. But I'm just, just thinking out of the box, saying, just in general, chemicals, and then you, you rate, you see what is gonna be used in the application and how the harmful it is. So it's, you know, it would only be the chemicals that are specific for that application that you'd be looking at.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that, I just don't know if, I don't know-
I don't know, again, that's legal ground.
Right, I don't know if it'd be limited there, or if we're gonna open up Pandora's box, that's concerning.
I understand, I understand.
Um, if, if I may, may say to, if this is any assurance to you, um, yeah, you definitely need legal guidance on that. But my understanding, and having looked at other communities, and that's why I really encourage you to get other people who have successfully moderated mining activities elsewhere, um, that you, you get, you, you see the wording that they've chosen, 'cause you can be very specific about what you wanna eliminate, um, is, is my understanding. And so again, you know, getting Southern Environmental Law Center, getting, um, Jan Morel, um, who has, has helped, Steve, Steve Emmerman, they've both worked on the language of, um, moderating, um, you know, mining activities in other communities successfully. Um, Montana, uh, has a ban on cyanide. You can take a look at that, it's really simple. It's just like the, the bill that we, um, proposed to, uh, the General Assembly this year, the, the ban on cyanide, really simple. Um, it's like a text amendment, um, so it's very, it's very simple. Um, I don't know how you would do it at the local level, but, uh, 'cause I haven't, we haven't seen anything at the local level banning, banning cyanide, an example, but, you know, I don't, you know, there's a lot out there. And, and again, you have resources that can advise you, that are, are happy to, that's what they do. They're helping to, um, you know, clean up the mess all around the world.
Ma'am, have you, uh, have you submitted a list of those individuals we can use for response to our chairman?
Um, I have, uh, I believe I've given you, um, Dr. Steve Emmerman's and Jan Morel, but I can, I can certainly send it again, and Southern Environmental Law Center.
I ha, I have all three, Steve, uh, Mr. Emmerman, uh, Jan Morel, and Stephanie Johnson.
Yeah, uh, and, and Southern Environmental Law Center, that they would be, 'cause they, you know, they, they've already been working. They already helped other communities draft, um, uh, ban, and like, I, I sent you, I sent you all the, the two examples of two municipalities that banned fracking. Um, it was Augusta and, uh, County of Richmond.
Chairman, I, I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do any kind of decision-making here at this point in time, but I would certainly be interested in, in listening to what some of those people have to say specifically about the wording. That would be of your interest, I don't know.
Right, um, well, before we get into that discussion, any more questions for Heidi, please?
Yeah, I, I, um, I just, I guess I wanna say one more thing. Um, again, yeah, um, the, the language, I think if you see a few of them, it'll give you some ideas, uh, 'cause I've, I've looked at a few of them. Um, and, uh, I, I find that really helpful, um, to, to see what others have done, why reinvent the wheel, right? Um, that can be very instructive. So any other?
I think that's, everything, I appreciate your presentation and answering questions.
Well, thank you so much for all your questions and your attentiveness. Again, I, I know this is a lot, and you have a lot of other things on your plate, but we gotta deal with it, huh? Thank you.
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our discussion. Um, one, we don't have the legal answers, uh, not answers, I guess, really, uh, from Mr. Wright yet, so do we wanna schedule another work session? And do you want to invite, uh, some of these other speakers? What's the pleasure of the commission here? I don't know, uh, Mr. Wright will just have to let us know when he has those other legal opinions in so he could, you know, answer questions. We can set up another work session and hope that he's got those at that time.
Do you know if Mr. Wright, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you know if Mr. Wright would be willing to have, uh, at le, another attorney in here who seems to have some knowledge in this?
I would suspect he would prefer just to give his opinion and to the, to the commission first. Oh, well, I'll let him speak for himself.
Question is, would you be willing to have an additional, another attorney in here who's been familiar with this stuff, discuss this with us as well?
Yeah.
I mean, it's your call, I'm just asking.
It's Joe's call.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll chime in on that. I think, uh, by asking other attorneys or whatnot to come in, I think inadvertently we're creating some bias, because we're asking people to come in that do have experience and have made noteworthy changes in their communities, whereas I can only imagine that there are more than not communities like ours that have chosen to stay within the framework that they have existing, like special use permits, until the Virginia State Assembly can make more headway. You know, right now, we're trying to operate in parallel while they're making progress, and I think that, that's difficult. So I can only imagine that there are other communities that have just chosen to, to stay until there's more legislation that supports it. So I would, I don't know that I'd be comfortable inviting in people on this side who have chosen to take action. So I think we have a very valid concern on this board that what we have existing is equally sufficient. So I think by bringing in a bunch of people who have supported banning and some of these stringent things, I think we are creating some bias that maybe we're not thinking about.
Yes, sir.
I think, honestly, we oughta have Mr. Wright come in here and tell us what he knows and let us adjust it. I think it's gonna take maybe one, not just one meeting, but I'd like to hear legally what he thinks the laws allow or, or... In fact, I've even got another question, 'cause quite frankly, I don't think the, the state not addressing something is an automatic negative toward our addressing it. And I need to get, I need to understand that, because it seems to me, if we can't be less restrictive, it means we could be more. And quite frankly, if the state doesn't have the regulation that we need, uh, I, I don't think that lim, and it doesn't say anything, it doesn't say something like, "You cannot have that regulation." It wouldn't, uh, that doesn't necessarily make me believe that we can, uh, that we cannot have that regulations a, a, as an independent, uh, locality. I really, I don't know that answer, and I wanna find that out. 'Cause I think that has a lot to do with what we're gonna end up in wording. So it'd be good to listen to this thing for an hour, but then I think we're probably gonna have to go on and listen to a few other things before we come up with a recommendation, uh, recommendation. That would be my view, sir.
Everyone in agreement with Pete's suggestion that we schedule another work session when Mr. Wright has got his legal opinions together?
I guess we can, but, but I've been kinda looking at what's, what's already on that zoning. Um, just like in A1, mining and quarrying have to have a federal and a state license and/or state license.
Right.
So it'd be good to know what those licenses are required of. And then part of, um, our special use permit says, you know, the Planning Commission and the, um, Board of Supervisors gonna make the changes in the ordinance, at the same time, we gotta go by the, what's in the Code of Virginia. So to me, the Code of Virginia is something we need to work, look at that, and know where we can go forward, reverse, whatever. And, um, that's what it tells you. It, it just tells you right now what we're looking out for. One of the things is to reduce soil erosion in A1, so that could be a big deal there too. Preventing water pollution, protecting watershed, reducing hazards of floods and fires. That's just part of our zoning. We got, to me, we got a lot there to work with. We got, to me, we got a lot there to work with. The code of Virginia and the two permits from the state and the federal would be two good things to see where it would put us at.
What you're referring to is just working through the S U P.'s special use permit process?
Yeah. To see what we already got and see what we already can do.
Right.
And, you know, that's a big deal.
Okay.
See, that's going to affect what we already have in the county.
All right. In saying that, Pete, it's Pete's suggestion, table for all the commissioners, we'll schedule a work session for Mr. Wright, get his legal opinions on whatever he gathers and then if necessary, which probably be, I think Pete's probably correct on that, we'll then have him possibly have another work session before we make a final decision on what avenue we take. All right. Nikki, we'll go ahead, I guess we'll schedule, I'm not sure if Mr. Wright will be ready or have gathered all his opinions at that point, but we'll tentatively schedule for May.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the work session is tentatively scheduled for May 15th, the third, Monday.
Can't do that. That's the Planning Commission training session in Richmond.
Yeah, that's comp plan, right.
I think the training session, is that the week prior or is that the 14th and 15th?
14, 15.
Remember, this meeting starts at...
Six?
Seven.
Seven. It was moved an hour.
Okay.
In looking at what will happen from CRC, they submitted their schedule, I have that handy. At the May meeting with CRC, it will only be a discussion of where a community meeting will be held. So I wouldn't anticipate that we would have...
So you'd like we could have it then, after that?
I would see that there would be availability within the agenda for that day in May. And then moving forward to June, it appears that CRC would not be here at our work session. They would be holding the community meeting and then in turn come back to us in July to discuss the results of the community meeting. So we, as the Planning Commission, do have availability in the agenda for those two potential work sessions for May, June.
All right. I'm going to ask the participants of the training, who are adding on to that work session. Do, y'all will be in class and then traveling back from Richmond, we moved it back to seven o'clock. But that, Mr. Wright already indicated it's going to add at least an hour to it. Do you feel comfortable doing that or do you want to see if we can schedule?
He's coming there. E M. is coming there.
Oh, I don't know. Mr.?
Yes, I'm just a listener.
Oh, okay. We were tentatively setting up for May on our work session for you if you have those opinions.
The 15th, yes.
15th. Make that work, okay.
Just going to move it back another hour is what they're saying.
Right.
Going to make it seven instead of six o'clock.
Well, we'll go ahead and schedule it for that and we'll give you whatever time you need because I'm sure we're going to have some questions.
I'm appreciative.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. That's decided then, we're going to go, let us finish and then I'll get, Selena, we're setting up for May, the, I forgot the date.
May 15th, 7:00 P. M.
All right. All right. That brings us to Commissioner Matters and Concerns. Do any commissioners have anything they want to voice at this time? All right, saying none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moving.
Again.
All right. All the favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned, thank you.